Good evening and welcome to the December 14th meeting of the Town of Foxborough School Committee. Welcome. We have a full gallery this evening. That's exciting. So, welcome back, or welcome to everybody. As usual, we're going to start our meeting with open public comment. This evening, we have three people that have signed in to provide some type of comment. We would ask everyone to limit their comments to five minutes. And again, as a reminder, all comments should be directed to me as the chairperson. And if anyone from the committee wants to participate, wait for recognition by me to respond or participate in the conversation. First on the list is Carrie Weston.
Hello, everyone. Carrie Weston, Judge Brown Lane in Foxborough. I'm here today to show my support for our school committee's decision to uphold DUCY's mask mandate and the test and stay program. There are many of us in the district who agree with this. And even though we have not attended past meetings, we felt that it was time to have our say. We have heard from many others for months now that do not support these mitigation strategies that you've all put in place. So I wanted to come here to show support and thank our administration and school committee. It's worth noting that I'm actually not pro-mask or anti-mask. I believe in what our medical experts, state health officials and DUCY have studied and decide how best to protect our children and our communities. I recognize I'm not a biologist, an infectious disease specialist. I'm not a doctor, not even an educator or a school administrator. But what I am is a mom of three children at the Ahearn. And I'm a master degree former HR director, consultant of my own practice, who's lived and worked in three different countries. I'm a PTO, PAC and CPAC board member. I'm a parent school leader and current school council member. And I'm a volunteer with various local and regional organizations that help the betterment of our community and our kids. I've worked with the Foxborough School Administration because I insert myself where I think I can be of assistance and a voice for parents. I take my job as a parent of school-aged children seriously. I prefer to advocate for things that I can control and have a reasonable amount of knowledge in. I do not blindly follow our administration. I sometimes disagree and often ask the difficult questions. But what I do have is perspective of our school administrators and school committee members. I've worked with some of you. I know your objectives are, as is mine, and kids to keep the kids in school full-time as safely as possible. Clearly, we all saw the difficulties for our kids remotely in hybrid last year. We're still feeling the effects of that. I believe that you all truly want our children to grow academically and that you care about their mental and physical health. Through your thoughtful analysis and everything that you do, I support your decision to follow DUCY's mandate in the test and stay program simply because it keeps kids in school. I believe at times that we need to put the needs of our community above our own. And I also believe that children can be taught that, no matter how inconvenient or difficult it may be. I want to personally thank the tireless efforts of our teachers, and I may actually cry because two of them are sitting in this room, of our teachers, nurses, staff and administrators and committee members to make this school, this school year as successful as possible. I want to thank your ability to remain calm and neutral even when disrespectful comments, behaviors and opinions are directed at you. I want to thank you and our school system for continuing to innovate and move forward. Masks are admittedly a hot topic. However, it is small in comparison to the many responsibilities and results that you guys have all helped accomplish. Some advancements, some advancements and topics in recent meetings were awesome. You know, the multi-tiered school support, how the data is informing how you guys are teaching our kids, the new language methods that you're using. I mean, it's been pretty incredible. Enrichment and theater coming back, all great stuff. So what is possible going forward? I would love for parents on all sides of this debate to focus on what we can control, show this much energy, enthusiasm and research into supporting our kids in all ways. Come and join a CPAC meeting. For those of you that don't know what CPAC is, it's our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Come and see what our school is doing to help our most vulnerable kids. We have our director here in the room tonight who makes himself available. Last month, he made himself available for a coffee chat, and that one parent came in the evening. We had a good attendance, right Cory, in the earlier, earlier session? But it would be great to utilize the administrators and the staff that we have. I also think it's important that we attend all school-sponsored webinars. They are thoughtfully chosen by all of you with the right experts in mind to address the needs of our kids. For our PTOs and PACs, come to a meeting, join a subcommittee, lead a fundraising effort. You may or may not know that we are looking at trying to put in some additional equipment at the Ahearn, and we're fundraising for that. And that is maskless time that our children have outside. We're trying to enhance their enjoyment outside. We're also looking at doing, instead of a winter carnival inside, we're looking at doing a spring fling outside, again, supporting our children's enrichment and social activities maskless. I could say volunteer to be a coach. We're always looking for volunteers in our sporting, as you know. We're always short on volunteers within our school and our committee, and our kids need your support. So my intent in coming to speak today was to show support for the committee and not necessarily drum up volunteer support, but that's kind of worked out pretty well in my favor. But that was not why I was here. It is a way to get to know your administrators and your teachers. But I feel though, instead of attacking our committee and focusing on the mask and the test issues that maybe exploit our widely different views on the topics, let's put our attention and focus on what brings us all together and what we can actually agree on, and that's the education and enrichment of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Next on the list, I'm sorry Wendy, I can't read your last name.
That's all right.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought it said, but I didn't want to screw it up, so I apologize.
Hi, I'm Dr. Wendy Cohen. I live in Foxborough and I have two kids in our schools, 13-year-old at Ahearn and a nine-year-old at the Taylor. And much like Carrie, I've, well, unlike Carrie, I haven't been as involved, but I've been following some of the discourse around the other school committees and really am here to give voice to those of us in the community who do support your work in all of the difficult decisions you've had to make in the last two years about how to keep our kids in school safely. So I'm a family physician, have a practice in Mansfield. I've been diagnosing and treating people with COVID and COVID exposures since March of 2020. I've been helping families navigate the upheaval in their lives and translate that science into day-to-day choices and behaviors. In my medical training, I could never have imagined a time in medicine when we would have to adapt and learn so much so fast and take action based on best available information at the moment, while paying close attention to accumulating data in real time so that we can adjust our actions and choices as we learn more. I'm sure none of you on the school committee or the administrators or teachers in our schools could have imagined that you would have to completely reinvent how you run our schools and safeguard our kids. During the past two years, I've seen personally and through many of my patients how difficult virtual and hybrid schooling has been on our kids and our families. I've seen an increased incidence of anxiety and depression in kids and adults, exacerbated by isolation, stress and disruption of socialization and routine. As you all know, COVID cases and hospitalizations are going up again in Massachusetts, and we are again learning about a new variant. And we have to adapt our behaviors and actions to keep ourselves and our community healthy. We all wish this pandemic was over and we could go back to normal life tomorrow. But putting our heads in the sand is not going to get this over with more quickly. Vaccination rates in Massachusetts are relatively high, which gives me hope that we won't see another winter like last year. But now is not the time to get political about masks. This is science. There's clear evidence that masks work to help decrease the spread of COVID infection. Are they 100% perfect? No. But that doesn't mean they're not useful. Having a high percentage of the community vaccinated is helpful. Wearing a mask helps. Staying home and getting tested if you have symptoms helps. Washing your hands, not touching your face helps. And if we all do all of these things, we will be able to safely have more freedom to get back to regular activities and, very near and dear to my heart, keep our kids in school in person. I want to thank all of you on the school committee for being open-minded, carefully studying the data as it grows, keeping the physical and mental health of our children your top priority and making policy decisions in the best interest of the whole community. Thanks, Ruda.
Thank you very much. Carrie, I forgot to ask, and Wendy, if you guys wouldn't mind, because you have written comments, if you could give them to Ms. Gracia for the record, that would be awesome. Thank you so much. And the final community member, Rebecca Kelly.
Rebecca Kelly, 18 Forest Road. I don't have really anything to add to what Wendy and Carrie said. I just wanted to express my support for the things that they brought up and my support for the administration and the school committee for the work that you have done to keep our kids safe and to keep them in school full-time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating in the open public comment section. Now we move on to our regular agenda. The first item on the list this evening is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening to approve. The first would be from the regular meeting on November 16th. Were there any questions or comments or edits about those minutes from the November 16th school committee meeting? Hearing none, or may I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor of the November 16th minutes? Thank you. 500. Thank you very much. Sorry, it's only one. I thought it was two. Oh, October 28th. I misprinted. Yeah, thank you. So the other one is the October 28th meeting minutes. Thank you, Michelle. Any questions or comments or edits about the October 28th meeting?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. All in favor? 500. Thank you very much. Moving on, thank, to our next agenda item. Dr. Berdos, would you like to make the introductions here?
I would love to. I'm going to ask Ms. Muirhead. Ms. Washburn, come up to the guest table here. They are here representing a host of people this evening. You have in your packet a proposal to name an existing facility, and that is backed up with a number of supporting documents that you have as well as the policy and whenever there is a request of meeting the requirements and the criteria for naming a facility or naming something within a facility. So I will turn it over to these two fabulous Burrell teachers and let them speak on what they're here to propose.
Thank you. Hello, thank you for giving us some of your time tonight. I'm Karen Washburn. I'm a fourth grade teacher at the Burrell. I recognize a lot of your faces. This is Renee Muirhead. She's a kindergarten teacher also at the Burrell. We're here tonight because, as you know, our beloved principal is retiring sadly at the end of this month. And to show her how loved and supported she is and appreciated, we would very much like to name our new school library after Michelle. We would like it to be named the Michelle McCarthy Library. This idea has been unanimously supported by the staff, the PTO and the school council of the Burrell. And we hope that we can make that happen with the approval from you all tonight.
And I'm here to just share some points of why we think she's so wonderful and awesome. I get the lucky job of doing that. Michelle is an extraordinary principal and person. The staff at the Burrell can attest to her fairness, leadership and friendship. She is wise and continually supports her staff through advice and encouragement. She never hesitates to help those in need. And I'm going to just share a few remarkable things she has done. Michelle participates in local 5K races for various causes in Foxborough. She participates in Cleanup Day. She works with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts in Foxborough on projects and has been on countless committees to better serve Foxborough. Michelle has impacted the lives of thousands of students through the years, always treating each and every one like it was her own child. The Burrell School has experienced some horrific tragedies during her time as principal, through our time also, and through it all, she was a pillar of strength for our community. Her support to her staff and all families was remarkable. And then lastly, there's much more than this, but these are-
We could go on for days.
We really could, but we figured we didn't want to. Michelle delayed her retirement so that she could see the Burrell renovation project completed. She worked countless hours to make sure the project ran smoothly. The morale of the staff through the various moves and transition always stayed high due to Michelle's positive nature and spirit.
So as you can tell, Michelle McCarthy definitely deserves the honor of having the Burrell School Library named after her. She is an important part of our school and our community. And we hope that you approve our request tonight. And if you do, we get to tell her tonight. She does not know.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I was just going to say one thing. So I was really pleased. I started my career in Foxborough with Michelle. She was the middle school assistant principal and I was the high school assistant principal. And so she was feeding me for four years and I was reaching out to her for four years. So my direct personal contact with her shows what a wonderful human being she is. And then she went to take over Burrell. But my exposure in four school districts, at different times, these questions come up to dedicate something of an auditorium or whatever it might be, or a library to educators. And one of the things that's very compelling to me is someone that puts their time in with extreme longevity in one school system. Don't think it's easy to do anymore in education. Superintendents last five or six years. Principals last, I lasted eight in one job, you know, seven in another. So things move on, but when you get someone who dedicates their time and service and their total commitment of time for that time is incredible. 21 years in an educational career, two-thirds of an educational career to one town. So I'm very compelled by the service and longevity of that magnitude. And certainly, I'm compelled by the person that she is. So I certainly would support this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any questions around the policy that we have in place for naming a facility? So the one thing in the policy, just for everyone watching and everyone in the gallery this evening, the school committee vote must be unanimous for us to approve the naming of the facility. So I, like Richard, feel that Michelle is a really remarkable person. And I should probably just stop there because I don't know if I'm going to be able to. Seriously, I was, my children had the good fortune of attending the Burrell. Michelle was the principal most of the time. And when I was sharing with them that she was retiring, it was a, it was a, we had a lot of very good conversations. So personally, I, you know, I'm with Richard. I think it's a remarkable achievement and a remarkable contribution. And I also am fully in support of this. So if there are no other questions, will we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to name the Burrell Library, the Michelle McCarthy Burrell Library, or the Michelle McCarthy Library?
Thank you.
I'd love to second that.
Okay. Thank you very much. So all in favor? There you go. Thank you all.
Thank you both.
Thank you for bringing this forward.
And if I may, just as we're transitioning here, you know, part of your policy is not, is being recognized by the community, but is also being recognized by administrators as peers. And so I would just like to add that we are going, and I had mentioned this at the last meeting, we're going to feel her loss as she retires. We're excited for her, but as a colleague, we've all learned and grown from being able to work side by side with her. So I think that the dedication of the library and her name is very fitting.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thanks. So they left before, we could thank them for bringing it forward, but-
They couldn't wait to call in.
Yeah, so thank you guys very much. Dr. Berdos, we're going to stay with you and your update.
Yes. So let me just, I've got lots of paper here. So as everyone may be exhausted with COVID, COVID isn't. And so we continue to see our numbers, it was referenced earlier. We're seeing our numbers grow. We're seeing it at the town level. We're seeing it at the school level, particularly at our elementary level. That seems to be where the highest number is right now, which is not surprising that districts that we talk to around us, the same thing is happening. So as far as the town, we're at a 6.68% positivity rate. So that has continued to grow. The last time I reported, we were, you know, under 5%. And in the schools right now, we have 40 active cases. Again, as a reminder, we update that every Wednesday on our website so you can see, but you will see the majority of those are at the elementary level. And with the vaccination rate, we're seeing that increase. So we've seen at the, to stay with the elementary as an example, we run anywhere from 20 to 28% of students at the Burrell, the IGO and the Taylor that have been fully vaccinated. At the high school level right now, we are still at a 76% vaccination rate. That's what we're, that's where we were at the last school committee meeting. And so you might say, oh, some time has gone by. Why haven't we seen that creep up some? We have 21 students right now that have had their first dose. If they're fully vaccinated, once we get to that point, the combined student-staff percent would be at 78%. So we're still under that 80% that the Department of Education has as a threshold before we can even consider any kind of changes. So we are under that. At the middle school, we are at a 54% combined student and staff vaccination rate. So we're seeing a lot of our middle school students that are, the vaccination rates are increasing there, which is a great sign. And speaking with nurse leader Jen Rosenberg, she has sent out a reminder to families not saying to go get vaccinated. I want to be clear. It's a matter, we know that some families have not turned in proof of vaccination. For instance, if they were vaccinated in Rhode Island, we are not able to get that through the Massachusetts system. And so it's just a reminder, particularly for some that have had the first dose and not the second. So it was just a reminder sent to those families. But again, we are not pushing that. It's a matter of just asking for that information. So for the test and stay program, it's really important because if you are vaccinated and you've become a close contact, then you're exempt from the test and stay protocols. So that's where we are with our vaccination rates right now. We continue to watch those closely. Just again, would like to point out, our nurses have done an amazing job. They're fielding phone calls more than you can ever imagine every day. Had a lot of really nice comments from parents even that where they're taking the time and answering questions. So I just, the contact tracing that's still taking place, it's an exorbitant amount of time during the day on the behalf of the principals and administration, as well as our school nurses. So I need to make sure and point that out. You'll hear that again as we get into our action plans, through our Plan for Success. But it definitely is something that takes up quite a bit of time. But it's important because we're able to keep our students in school, and that is our goal. The only other update that I had is related to the Burrell, and it's been mentioned before, and it's just a reminder again that we'll be having the ribbon-cutting ceremony on Tuesday, December 21st. That's at 1:30. And then the community is invited to come between 3:30 and 5:30 for an open house if they want to come and be able to see the Burrell project completed. So just a reminder that that will be taking place and that we will have some folks from the MSBA that will be coming for the ribbon-cutting. And we're hoping that maybe we can have the media cover that as well. Phil, I don't know if there's anything else that I've missed.
Obviously, state legislators and a couple maybe there as well, but no, I think you got it all.
Okay. So that's it for the updates.
Thank you. Questions?
Oh, you know what? Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. I did, did I say something about vaccine clinics happening at the school for COVID vaccines?
We did have vaccine clinics. We had the first one at the beginning of December.
Okay.
We had around 60 people that came for the clinic itself. And then the second doses, three weeks later, they have that schedule. So-
Great.
That took place in the IGO cafeteria.
Do we have any more, I'm just wondering if we have any more-
We don't have any others scheduled at this point in time. But it's definitely something that we can continue to look towards scheduling because if we find that that will get more people out and it's more convenient for families, we are more than willing to do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. This is the, next on the agenda, we'll start with Dr. Mello and then Dr. Berdos to talk about the Plan for Success.
You're starting with me?
Well, we don't have to start with you, but I just wanted to make a little variety.
We'll definitely be co-presenting this, but I think you are kicking it off, Dr. Berdos.
Yes, we're definitely going to co-present. And we have some of our Plan for Success team members in the audience. So I'd just like to recognize that we have Kate Campbell here from the IGO. We have Mrs. Myers Pakla from the high school. Karen Frazier from the middle school. Mike Stanton from the Taylor. We have Tim Frazier from the middle school. We have Erin, Director, Hayer, Director of Technology, and Cory Michalazek, Director of Student Services. So if we get to points here and there's questions, we can see that you might have something that are more specific, I'm thinking, that might be technology-related, and it might be something that we'd want Mr. Hayer to answer or any, any others. So the Plan for Success, we are so excited to be here to present this to you this evening because it has been quite the journey. And I would like just to take a moment and do a reminder of what this journey has looked like. I realize, looking up there, there's a lot of information and you're not able to necessarily read it, but you have it in your packets. The journey began, actually, when I began as superintendent, which was four years ago. And that was coming on board with an entry plan and doing a lot of outreach with stakeholder groups and then collecting that information, looking with our administrative team through document reviews, going through a strength, weakness, opportunity and threat analysis, looking at the many report findings that we have, and taking that forward to be able to come up with our district strategy for improvement. And that's been driving our work for the last couple of years. And that work then was very important as we started our work with following the Massachusetts Department of Education Strategic Planning Improvement Process. And that is planning for success. Therefore, this is our Plan for Success. It's an inclusive, hands-on approach. It's designed to build district and school capacity and coherence while also building our community understanding and our support. You will see connections from this as it will tie in with the budget presentation this evening too. Because it's very important that we're able to communicate our work that we need to do within the schools, what the implications are as it relates to resources and budget as well. So as part of this journey, after, beginning in January of 2020, we had a very large planning team that consisted of administrators and teachers and specialists. We had an outside facilitator, Dr. Ruth Gilbert Whitner, who facilitated that process for us as a consultant from the outside. She's been trained by the Department of Education. And one of the things that really I particularly found helpful is she also is a superintendent's coach through the MAS S, New Superintendent's Induction Program. So to be able to tie the work that we need to do at the same time as how it connects with strategy for improvement, it made sense in following the model framework from the Department of Ed. So again, it's a continuous district improvement model that the Department of Ed is really hoping that districts will follow. Using the facilitator, it helped having an outside perspective, particularly someone who's run that process in multiple districts. So we started that process at the new year in January. We had a number of large planning sessions, which included visioning, community engagement, using information that you would be familiar with for sure, like our K-12 culture and climate surveys, going through another SWOT analysis, looking at loads of district data and having training sessions with that larger team. But then that team went out to be able to pull more information by, at the school level and through staff meetings and through focus groups to have that information inform the planning team that was working to put this in place. Our administrative leadership team then would take work outside of that, put it together, would take it back to the larger planning team, and we were well on our way. And then we shut down on March 13th of 2020. We tried to continue that work through Zoom meetings at that- We tried to continue that work through Zoom meetings at that time and found that it just was not the same. So, it was interrupted. We continued to do good work through that time period by following the district strategy for improvement, but as far as having all of the team together, we just weren't able to do that based on that being hijacked by COVID. We reconvened during the summer, and you can imagine getting your momentum with that many people back together. It takes a little bit of time to think, where were we when we think about the visioning process and our, developing our themes and our objectives for going forward. But we did it. We started, we've continued all fall to work, and we are here this evening with a plan that when you look at it on paper, it's a few pages. So, it's deceiving when you think about the amount of work, conversations that went into developing the themes, the strategic objectives and initiatives. And then, one thing that is different from our past strategic plan is that it has a one-year action plan. So, it's taking the big picture. We're prioritizing what are the objectives and strategic initiatives and saying, in this 21-22 school year, where is our focus going to be? What are the budget implications with that? And what are the resources, professional development, et cetera, that are going to be important during that action plan? We will then come forward at the end of the year and report out on the action plan of where we are. This next slide here is just a quick slide to show all of the different components in order to create and align the Plan for Success with our resources that we have, such as district performance data, our community feedback that we receive, our budget. You'll hear a lot tonight about grants and implications and how that plays into different resources within the plan. School improvement plans will then be mirrored after this. So, at the end of this school year, you will see the principals come forward with their school improvement plans, and they will then have the one-year action plan, which will be different than what we've had in the past, but it's really going to help make it more seamless as the district improvement plan will inform. It'll be different, particularly where you have three elementary schools. There's some nuances, but as far as our vision and our work is going to be driven by this plan. So, you see a list of people up here, some that are no longer with us because they've retired or they've moved on to different positions. So, just to take a moment there to recognize all of our members that are there. So, as an example, you see Dr. Einzel's name as the Director of Special Education because of the 18 months that we've worked on this plan. And then, you have, as an example, Corey Michalazek, who is there. So, we wanted to make sure to pay tribute to the time that they spent on developing this, as well as all of our teachers and our specialists, their voices, and them going back to their peers and collecting information and perspectives was so important to this process.
I just think it's important to note the cross-section of the roles that people play that were on this committee and that they were chosen because they bring various perspectives from different grade levels, different content areas, different specialties and different roles, whether it be building-based or district-wide. So, that we found extremely helpful to have the cross-section of the staff and their perspectives shared throughout the whole process.
When we look at our mission, our vision, our core values and our theory of action, it's quite similar to what we've had in the past. The differences that you'll see when we went back to this as this large group to see if any of it needed to change, the changes you'll see is in bringing inclusivity and equity forward, particularly if you look under the core values where you have relationships as it spells out care, the acronym, if you look down. You know, in the past, that began with respect, but a lot of conversations and talking about its relationships built on mutual respect, relationships and kindness, and all of the different constituency groups, parents and teachers and community members and town organizations are really important in residence through the entire community. So, that's a place that you will see a change. When you look at the E and embracing the diversity and dignity of individuals and cultures enriches the learning and supports for the development of responsible citizenship, that is, it's not just ensuring, it's embracing and looking at diversity and celebrating individuals and cultures and having that support everyone in becoming responsible citizens going forward. So, all of the work ended with four pillars of success, and facilities and infrastructure is the first one, teaching, learning and pedagogy, the second, well-being, the third, diversity, equity and inclusion, the fourth pillar. They seem simple, but the amount of conversations to be able to come up with that and to really encompass what we were hoping to encompass took much longer than one would imagine. Even just well-being, the number of conversations when we're talking about social, emotional health and support and mental, there's so much there, and then it's really the whole child and its well-being. So, that's just one example of something that became very short. So, those are the four areas. Dr. Mello and I are going to go through each of those and then have some other opportunities. If you have questions, anything specific. The strategic objectives, those are the overarching under each of those four pillars. And then, the strategic initiatives that are listed underneath is what we looked at for our one-year action plan of where are we going to focus under facilities and infrastructure. And Dr. Whitner had talked about in this planning process, you really, the goal is to have three to four strategic initiatives under your objectives. And then, when you're focusing, really focusing on one. I will tell you, we have an overzealous group, and they had a hard time in many cases saying we're focusing in one area. So, you'll see, like, when I talk about facilities and infrastructure, it's really focusing on two initiatives, but it doesn't mean that those will be done at the end of the year. It's parts of those that we'll focus on this year. As far as teaching, learning and pedagogy, you'll see that we're focusing on one particular area and well-being, two, and then diversity, equity, inclusion, two. So, the plan itself, the color coding of what you see are those four pillars of success, our outcomes by the end of 2025, what we hope to accomplish, but the real crux of the work is in the action plan.
And can I just add, you talked a lot about Dr. Whitner and the conversations that we had, and I think it's important to note that they weren't, it wasn't just dialogue. She had very structured activities for us to go through to really help us bring the focus and narrow the ideas to things that were actually actionable, things that we could measure. Made me think of our chair, Rob, the language was very important and the way that we worded it so that we know that we could see it, and it was very thoughtful, and you could tell that she's done this many times. So, it really helped us take all these big ideas and bring them down, which is part of what took so long.
So, if we move to that first pillar, facilities and infrastructure, one of the things that I'd like to point out here is in our former strategic plans, that was very much building-based. And how the dialogue has shifted in the work is facilities and infrastructure, you need the right environment in order to support teaching and learning. So, you will see things that have to do here with providing a safe and secure environment, but also, what does it look like from a learning environment when it gets into the design of classrooms, when it gets into flexible furniture and things that we've tried with wobbly chairs and, you know, desks that are raised? That's facilities, but it has to do with meeting students' needs from a teaching and learning standpoint. So, there's a lot here, particularly under facilities and infrastructure. Just to point out a couple, and then I'll stop and see if you have questions under this particular area, is the objective is providing a safe, secure, supportive, responsive and innovative learning environment for all students and staff. And how we're going to go about that as far as the initiatives that you see laid out in this action plan is maintaining an innovative and safe environment, implementing best practices, and then really evaluating our infrastructure and making any recommendations based on current and future teaching and learning. And that was a very interesting process in going through that, particularly when we're thinking about future teaching. I mean, what we were thrust into in this past, you know, year, two years and where we're going is very different than what we imagined. When we thought about, most districts roll in one-to-one technology over a period of time, and we did that all at once. We're going to have to think about that when it comes to the refresh cycle of having all of those devices at once. But at the same time, we have to keep in mind of where we are with COVID and making sure that our environment is safe and we're able to have those mitigation strategies in place. We have a lot of grants right now that are supporting that work, but it's really important to keeping students in school. So, those are very concrete things as far as the learning environment. And then, 11 years ago or so, we had partnered with MetroLEC as far as doing threat assessments on all of our buildings in the safe, secure environment. And that work, we need to go back, we've partnered with the Foxborough Police Department through a grant that the Chief Grace has been able to obtain, and we've been able to go through with the high school first. Our goal is to do this threat assessment, looking at infrastructure, looking at professional development needs that we need to do at the high school and the Ahearn this year. It's costly in order to do this full study and to be able to see, well, what are the things that would come out of that as far as it might be, you know, hardening access to buildings? We've done a lot through other grants and other, through local funds, but what do we need to do going forward? The other example that came, my example, the other need is the one that you'll see that says establishing a building facility committee. And that one is really an important one because that's a committee that would assess our learning environments, that looks at it more from a teaching and learning aspect. What do we need from a facility standpoint that's going to support learning in the best way we can? When we think about the Borough project as an example, the group learning spaces that's there from a facility standpoint, we have those at the Ahearn. What are other things that need to be in place, whether it's furniture? What does that look like? And to be able to have a committee that can do that work and then see the needs and how that's going to impact budget going forward, and then consistency in learning spaces as well. So, Bill, you want to add a little bit more to that because I know you've got?
I think when you look at this committee, one of the things that we're pushing for is really to have, you know, we do curriculum reviews now every five years for each one of our major areas of curriculum. At the same time that those reviews are done, this committee should be working kind of side-by-side with them based on changes. I mean, if you took a simple science program change, you know, five years going forward, you can imagine what might change within the classroom itself, what the labs might look like, what the requirements might be for, you know, storage and setups and things of that nature. So, having a committee like this that's working alongside the curriculum side of it, I think not only informs the budget side of it, but I also think as we look forward to these different projects on schools, you know, we're fortunate that we've done a lot with a lot of schools. We do still need to do something, obviously, with the Taylor. But even after that, you're going to have one-offs that you're going to have to do within a building to change to make it work for the way the curriculum has changed. Technology is one of the biggest, you know, things I think about. We all just thought, you know, originally, technology was labs. Well, turns out now, we don't need the labs the way we needed them before because every kid has been provided with a computer. So, we can do it in a lab, we can do it in the classroom, we can do it in the hallway. We can pretty much do it anywhere. And, but even in the last year or so with the Borough project going on, we actually had to pivot the Borough project because it was not designed or thought of originally to be a one-to-one school. And in, when that came around, it took a group of people, Erin Hayer, working with us, to say, how do we switch this very quickly during the construction to make this whole thing work? So, we did it on the fly, but I think it would be a lot better as we move forward as a community to have this type of a program kind of in place, just like you do for curriculum. And they work hand-in-hand to basically make sure that your facilities do match what your curriculum is doing.
I would just second the example that you gave with science. When we adopted STEM scopes at the middle school, we realized it was a very lab-based experience for fifth and sixth grade, which was different. We had lab spaces for seven and eight, and we had lots of things being plugged in in the classroom, and that was not conducive to what we're trying to do. So, on the fly, we had to repurpose one of our rooms into a lab, and then recently, we did that again for Project Lead the Way. So, I think it makes total sense to do it in conjunction so that those, it's very much like the D cap group and the MTSS group met with the PD committee group, so that there's synergy there, so that you can plan moving forward.
Just don't know if there's any questions. There's a lot of information in those action plans, but if there were any specific questions under the facilities and infrastructure?
In terms of developing the committee, I realize the language is chosen, develop is chosen deliberately, but have you seen models of this work in other districts? Or do you, has your team discussed, you know, kind of makeup of the committee and activities and such?
So, actually, we haven't seen any other community do this, but I kind of look at this just like the town built. It's a permanent building committee. Many towns don't have that, but yet we've proven that that's a very successful adventure. So, I think in this particular case, we just see it as a need to be able to work hand-to-hand in something. And as Dr. Mello said, when you look at some of the changes we have to make, sometimes we have within our own budgets under facilities and stuff, the ability to do small changes. So, the science ones were a perfect thing, even though facilities had no idea what, you know, was needed there. Once it was kind of, you know, feathered out over summertime, we ripped, you know, different classrooms apart and redid them, put them back together. But it would be a lot better and a lot easier for our facilities to be able to do this if they see this coming forward, not the day before, but, you know, months before or a year before, so they can plan towards what it takes. Because as you can imagine, we have limited time to do a lot of these changes. So, we can't, it's not like buying a book. We can put it in tomorrow or the day after, but, you know, we only have certain days that you can actually do this type of work. So, I think that's really why we see this as something that may be a one-off from what other communities do, but we think it's a very important, you know, potential.
Well, similar to how I've seen the, when you're looking at new initiatives, I know you've taken teams of teachers and building leaders out to see other, onsite visits and such. I think things like that can be, when and where appropriate, a useful tool for a committee like this.
I also think, Brett, to answer your question, you know, a little bit fuller, as far as who would be on the committee, at least my vision is that obviously it's teachers and administrators, but it's also facilities so that they can kind of point out the pitfalls in different things that you're trying to do. So, again, that it's a group of people that all know what needs to be done, and they just have to figure out a way to get it done as that group.
I appreciate that because that's, without the facilities view, it might not be manageable or even sustainable. So, thank you.
And as far as the sustainability, one of the things that you have with each of the action plans is that resource page at the end. To be able to communicate, where's the funding coming from? For instance, in a number of these things, it's the SR1, 2 or 3 funding sources. SR3 is the latest of those grants. It's a two-year grant. We have it for this year and next year. But then, after that, what are the implications for funding? So, the second pillar is teaching, learning and pedagogy.
So, for teaching, learning and pedagogy, you're going to see a lot of things that are familiar, that you've heard a lot about this year throughout our different meetings. You'll notice that's one pillar that only has one objective because that objective is pretty beefy, so it's broken into two parts. The first one is providing opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common, equitable learning experience, experiences, which really falls under that umbrella of developing and implementing district-wide, consistent, multi-tiered systems of support so that we can ensure equitable opportunities for all learners. So, you've heard the terms, multi-term system of support, student support team, professional learning community and building-based support teams. We've talked about them at previous meetings. There's actually a proposal on the table right now to morph the student support team to the student success team. It has a more asset-based language, so you may see that shift in the coming months as we continue to work. So, our, the things that we are looking at are obviously developing the multi-tiered system of supports working group, and we started that in the summer, and then launching our initial MTSS systems district-wide. We've had targeted professional development. We've had meetings of our large district-wide MTSS group. We've also had the IGO school and the Taylor school participating in Desi's MTSS Universal Design for Learning Academy. They were the teams who were accepted, but the district MTSS team is carrying out many of the same objectives and vision across the board because, as you heard previously, while we had systems, they weren't exactly consistent. So, redefining them, making them consistent. And there are, as Dr. Bertos said, that's our goal for this year, but it will continue next year because there are implications in some cases where schedules still need to be adjusted and times need to be reworked. So, those pieces are all working in great synergy, but it's definitely a big undertaking. It involves everybody, and it affects everybody, every person who works with students and every student. every student, which is great. You'll also see under our process benchmarks, the implementation of a dyslexia screener. It also fits under the MTSS as having more data to identify where our students are. This was actually a DESI mandate that needed to be implemented by this fall. It's based on Mass General Law. There were some challenges with identifying and using the words around dyslexia in Massachusetts that have been discussed at length. So having this data is really an early screening tool for dyslexia. However, it also catches other deficits and assets in literacy across the board. So currently, we are using this K through eight. There is some discussion of moving it up through the high school, and that's incorporated into our ELA curriculum review that's happening right now. So we're hoping that that data that we get will be used in those data team meetings, in those PLC meetings, so that we can really plan the right interventions to support students. Of course, we have lots of support from the outside coming in. We have lots of professional development. We have lots of admin members helping us make this happen. We have things like monthly coaching sessions through our MTSS Academy. We have separate leadership sessions. There are tons of resources being shared. So there's a lot of moving parts, and it's an exciting time for us. It's a time of a lot of learning, and the professional development will continue into next year. People who are participating in the academy as coaches, who are specialists, our literacy, our math specialists, our curriculum directors, some of our administrators, they're getting very intensive training so that they can lead the PD and scale it out to the rest of the district next year. So it's a very intentional process, and it's a three-year process. So that's what year one looks like for us. As Dr. Burdo mentioned, we have been the beneficiary of variety of funding sources through some different grants to support this work. So for example, the MTSS UDL Academy is an opportunity that you can get through applying for it, which we did, but you could also just sign up for it and get it if you wanted to pay $10,000 each year. So we were fortunate enough to be selected so that we can participate in this at no cost to our district, but still get all of the unbelievable training and resources and support. And that's been really helpful to really accelerate our work in this area. The SR three grant funding, we have purchased the dyslexia screener. It actually is part of our illuminate platform, but it's a separate module called FastBridge. Part of DESI's mandate was outlining specific products that we could use. That happened to be one. We vetted it, we really, we thought it was outstanding, and it was great that from a technology perspective, it worked with something that we already had. So we'll see after that three years, those grant funds will be gone, there will be budget implications that we will have to consider, but the great thing is that we have time to plan for it right now. Any questions about, I know we've talked a lot about MTSS this year. Any questions?
Oh, I want, two. I'm delighted to see the early dyslexia screening. Are there others on deck that are coming down the pipe for maybe future years akin to that?
I think this one is very transferable. It's just about how we're using the assessments that are in there, and then it has the built-in interventions. So we are actually still getting some training on it as we go through. We learn a little bit. We've had our literacy specialists really building up, there's a lot of, to be totally honest, there's a lot of clicks involved that it's made it a little bit cumbersome. So they have created files to reduce the user experience so that we can get the interventions out quickly to kids. But there are opportunities for more assessments. We are using the assessments in other grades, but the real focus on the dyslexia screener is definitely an early screening system.
Sure. And then, that's nice because it folds right in, I mean, nicely supports MTSS as does the last one, 2.4. I was curious about the 2.2. More in long-term encouragement when I see the words include opportunities for inquiry-based learning and so on and so forth.
Yes.
It would be nice, MTSS, I'm totally on board with your goals, Dr. Burdo, the district strategic goals we all signed off on, that MTSS has to be, you know, near the top, but it'd be nice in future years to be able to strengthen that language.
Absolutely, and there was a lot of discussion about how much work was realistic in one year.
Yes.
And knowing the ELA curriculum review as an example is what's happening this year. We had the Hill for Literacy do an audit of our literacy instruction programs, professional development, everything, assessments last year to inform that process. So now we're rolling out this screener. So next year, the focus will shift to looking at the learning experiences, the curriculum maps, the curriculum documents, and that's where that work will be incorporated, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So you'll see that in next year's action plan, for sure.
Yes.
Does anybody else have questions? Okay, moving on to well-being. As Dr. Burdo said, it took us actually a little bit to come down to a name for this specific pillar. We thought that well-being really encompassed the whole child. We're thinking about students and how we support them to have healthy minds, healthy bodies, and be healthy, active members of our school community. So you'll see that as one of our first strategic objectives is really providing those supports. The second one has two parts. It's really thinking about how do we assess our current social and emotional learning programs and practices to evaluate their quality and then continue to fortify them based on their strengths? And how do we develop and implement district-wide, consistent SEL tools for screening? So where are students? And how do we inform our curriculum and what we do with students? So teaching and learning side related to social and emotional learning. And then how do we provide professional development that we need for that? So we, I think we've heard a lot this year, social and emotional skills are a huge area of focus, particularly post-pandemic. We know that students need supports in those areas, they did prior to the pandemic, and they do now. So this was actually, while probably not the most convenient time because there are a lot of things going on in our district, it was a necessary time for us to think about joining the DESI SEL Academy as well as the UDL. I know there's a lot of acronyms, so universal design, it's the social-emotional learning. We also joined that academy. That one is a little bit different because it's not building-based, it's district-wide with district-wide stakeholders. And that academy is, again, giving us a lot of targeted support, but at the same time, we are launching a universal social-emotional learning screener. So we know that, we've been communicating with parents about what that looks like and what we'll be using that information for. I believe that launches next week, is that right, Dr.?
Started today.
Started today, thank you. So collecting that information. So that will really help us to use our multi-tiered systems, right, our PLCs, our data meetings that we have, to really look in a concrete way at data about students, about where they are and what they need. And the particular tool that we use for our universal screen of panorama has interventions already built in. So if there is a student need identified, it will be immediately actionable. And obviously, if we look under our evidence of change benchmarks, we have an SEL committee that is working through that academy. They're going to be looking at the data. That data will also be looked at at the building level and the systems we mentioned before through those protocols that we have built for MTSS and progress monitoring. When we transition to the budget implications for this, there's been a lot of grant writing around SEL. So several of us worked on a grant from Brigham and Women's Health. It is a three-year grant that really helps us to support the work of the SEL committee outside of the academy so that they can do some additional work to really look at our practices in the district, to collaborate on our resources, and to really work on supporting and making recommendations around our structures. So we are very fortunate to receive that grant, and that will help fund that over the next three years so that those people can go above and beyond the work of the academy and move that initiative forward more quickly. We're also conducting an internal audit and self-assessment of the programs we have. So you might be familiar with responsive classroom, you might be familiar with steps to respect, things that we have in place, but we really want to look at, how are they working? How do we know they're working? And where may we have some gaps so that we can fortify and expand? So we know that through that process, because it's December, so we've been working on this, we do have a need for additional social workers to really help with the increased needs that we've seen in our students. We have seen an uptick in different medical placements and challenges that students are having related to mental health. So we have been able to fund a .5 social worker through the SR three grant, and we've applied actually for another grant that we're waiting to hear from about that. And we also just recently received a grant from the Department of Public Health to help us with our bridge program from students returning from hospitalization and really support that transition. I don't know, Corey, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure, so we are rolling out.
Do you have the?
I gotta come to the microphone.
We can hear you.
One more person, come on up for it. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
So this work is started in the past, and I just kind of continued it. So last year, we met with McLean through consultations, monthly consultations, and rolling out our bridge program. Is that me?
Yeah.
Which includes protocols, family handbooks.
Sure.
Entrance criteria for those students that may need access to that program, and also exit criteria as well for our students that are exiting that program. And so we're actually rolling it out, not many districts do it this way, but we're actually rolling it out, a program at the middle school because the need is there as well, and a program at the high school. So we're going to have two bridge programs running that support all students with various medical and mental health challenges that we've been, we've been seeing.
And this grant allows us to have a dedicated person?
Correct. So this grant allows us to have an educational liaison that supports kind of what's happening in the classroom and truly being that bridge between the classroom and kind of the social-emotional support that they're receiving in addition to a social worker that would also be supporting that program at a full-time basis.
And we can see how that would be a vital resource that we could come to rely upon, and when the grant funding expires, it's definitely something that we'll have to consider when we are looking at our budget. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So questions about well-being?
You. Hi, May.
Did I, you said, you talk about the SEL academies, you, I hear, did you also mention being involved in a UDL, Universal Design for Learning one as well?
The MTSS Academy?
Yes.
They're both MTSS academies, but one focuses on universal design.
Yep.
And those components of making accessibility reality for all students.
Yep.
And the other one focuses on social-emotional learning. Two separate academies led, they're both under DESI's umbrella, but led by different experts in the field and with different teams.
With different teams of district staff?
Correct.
Because I would say that that would play directly into your fourth pillar. Right?
Definitely. And you'll see, I think it's, what's really exciting about the planning for success model, at least for us, which probably sounds, you know, we're educators, we get dorky about things, but connecting the dots between the pillars and seeing where we can have synergy of work and then of outcomes because there's only so much time. So efficiency is definitely underpinning a lot of this, and you'll, I think, I hope that you see the connections between them. Other questions?
Paul, when you were saying exploring schedule options, is there a particular level that you're seeing more need than others?
I think we have in certain areas, particularly at the high school, and they're undergoing their NIASC, like the initial, the self-study.
Oh, good luck.
The schedule is not as flexible because of the constraints that they have. So it is a little bit more challenging where the Ahearn schedule currently has the meetings sort of set in place, that's not the same. And if you think about a high school teacher seeing hundreds of students versus an elementary teacher seeing twenty, you know, three or 24 students, the dynamics of getting the voices at the table are a little bit more challenging. So it may take a little bit more time for that, but being part of these academies, one of the beauties is you are with districts from across the Commonwealth. So you have the opportunity to learn from them and how they're doing things, and so far, that has been very valuable to us, on top of all the wonderful resources that we get from DESI. So where we've been able to make some great scheduling changes this year with IGO and Taylor being part of the academy, is they've been able to repurpose sort of part of their day so that they have their meetings in the morning, the PLCs and the student success team, we should just stop calling it that because it sounds great. That was a fairly easy switch, I mean, not easy, but it's working smoothly. At the Ahearn right now, some of it's semantics and changing sort of the feel and the formality of some of those meetings. And at the high school, there have been some that have been like, you know, we can do that, and there are others like, we really still need our committee to continue to work on how we can do that. And having it concurrent with the NIASC, I think, while it's, we have to slow down to speed up. We have to sort of wait to get into that process a little bit more, and then we'll be able to pick that up.
But that is, the timing of that, we're talking about connecting the dots to the timing, you're able to leverage that self-study of NIASC when there's so many other implications that are there. So the timing works out really well because to be able to roll it out, you can't do it all at once. You need to be really thoughtful as we go forward. So to be able to build it before and then take advantage of the time of all of the work that's being done at the high school through the self-study, it will end up helping tremendously as we move forward.
But I will say, while that is a challenge on the MTSS side in terms of the, you know, the data teams and the PLC piece, it's not a challenge on the SEL side where we have that bridge program that Corey just spoke about, and that will, once we have the personnel in place, because it is, that grant starts this year, we have to get that going. So we will see the implications of that much more immediately, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving on to the fourth and last pillar here, diversity, equity, inclusion. We've talked a lot in the last couple of years of the work that we've done in the area of cultural proficiency and professional development and recognizing, preventing, and minimizing bias, and a lot of really good work has been done. And then we took that team and then changed it a little bit to say, there's still so much work to be done. And when we look at diversity, equity, inclusion, we're looking at it from so many aspects to where it does interconnect. But it's important to understand what we're talking about. So when we talk about equity, what does that mean in schools? So one of the things that we wanted to be very forward, transparent about is defining that because it could mean different things to different people. And so even with our DEI committee, having the definition there to be able to ground our work and to think about our purpose and our goals that we're setting as we move forward is really important. So on these action plans, not only do you see the describing, the implementation, kind of the big picture, then if there's any key terms that are really important to know, we have those noted. And this is an example of one that we felt was really important to talk about so that we're all understanding what we mean when we're talking about equity in school. So we're looking at it to be able to provide the access and resources and opportunities for everyone and look more strategically at that data to see that we're not putting barriers in front of anyone based on socioeconomic status, based on identity, based on orientation or race or ethnicity or any of those things. Looking at, even when we're looking specifically at things like attendance data, looking at students that are taking upper-level courses, you know, what's, what are the opportunities? How does that play out across many different aspects in the educational environment itself? So when we talk about equity, we don't want that to be a predictor of student success. We want to be able to remove any barriers that are there so it's not predicted or predetermined based on any of those characteristics. So we're looking at curriculum, we're looking at instructional practices, we're looking at our school buildings, the facilities, what is there, and being able to visibly show. We've changed some of the questions within our K-12 Culture and Climate Survey to get at the inclusive nature of our schools. And even in our last DEI committee meeting, looking at that data again, the question came up was, do the parents or even teachers or students that are taking those surveys, do they understand what we're talking about in the terminology? In a question when it has with bullying, we spell out what bullying means that is different than conflict, but what's the definition of bullying to be able to better answer the questions so that perception data will be more valuable to us? This came up in that meeting, too. The definition, what are we talking about when we say equity in schools and what that looks like? And do we need to revisit how some of those questions are asked on that perception survey as one, just one example? And then looking at inclusion in schools as well. You know, the philosophy or the beliefs there are that everyone belongs and diversity is valued and that we can all learn from each other. And so the inclusivity, not just thinking about inclusive practices in class, absolutely, but also the other pieces of that when we, when we go even more to looking at our co-teaching models and how that's going forward and inclusion in our, in our classrooms.
And I will just say that in the MTSS May, I will just say that in the M T S S Academy, so the other teaching and learning and probably S E L too, these same things are all talked about because it is all about equity of experience for all students.
Some of the things that have come out too, when we think about our hiring practices, we know research that in education, not just Foxborough or Massachusetts across the country, it's predominantly females that are in education. When we look at our changing demographics in Foxborough as well, but more so in, you know, in other areas across the Commonwealth in the country, having students to be able to see themselves and the educators that are in front of them and how important that is. There, there's so much to this and really looking from hiring practices to where we're advertising to make sure that we have something beyond School Spring, as an example, to be able to reach other people that might be interested in applying and didn't know about it because of us using just School Spring as an example. So, you know, that's one of the process benchmark areas in, in looking at that, looking at the committee to guide the work as we move forward, setting the goals, how that's going to move forward. You've seen that in my, my goals as well and leading that work and what are our next steps? I can tell you that those meetings with those groups, people are all in to this work and really wanting, passionate about this work. So investigating our practices, looking at the needs through curriculum reviews, looking at professional development areas and continuing that work. And then also looking at other programs to bring that's going to make it more visible, the work that we're doing and looking at programs such as No Place for Hate, our diversity talks. We've done book studies and different things at the teacher level, but what are we doing for our students? And what does that look like in their experience? So that's part of the work specifically to this year as part of the D E I pillar. The implications when it looks for resources such as the grants, you know, the S R three grant, you've heard that mentioned a number of times, our English language learners, adding an additional L teacher to be able to better serve our students in our L population. We, we run anywhere from fifty-five to sixty-five students in the last few years that qualify for L services. And the number of students that become former L students, we still monitor them and that's by, it's looking at their academic work in schools, but also there's a state assessment, the access testing. And so if they become a former student, then it's, it used to be F L E P, formerly Language English Proficient, and then they changed it to F E L, F E L. We personally don't like that terminology because it just doesn't sound right. So, um, but the needs of our students for our English learners, they may exit as being an identified L student, but we still, by state law, have to monitor them for four years. So being able to hire an additional, additional L teacher to be able to support our students moving forward, that would be, we'd be, we're going to be able to do that because of the S R funds. I will tell you though, we have posted, we have interviewed and just, it's, it's not just Foxborough hiring staff, particularly in these areas, it's, it's really quite challenging and many districts are finding the same challenges with hiring. But whether it's special education, whether it's an L teacher, whether it's an interventionist to be able to meet the needs of our students, those are the outcomes of some of those grants that we've been able to access, either through coming, that are entitlement grants or those that have been competitive that we've gone forward for. So that's the, the fourth pillar of D E I.
Thank you. Questions? Any, just on the, overall on the plan, anybody? Comments?
One, well, one comment would be, as I know that one of the other things that is on our agenda tonight is transitioning into budget, and you mentioned this, Dr. Melo, so thank you, is that I hope you won't be shy about when you see, when and where you see successes here, if that has implications for staffing so that we can better support students. Well, at least, speaking only for myself, I really want to hear about it, I mean, even if it means, because we've talked throughout this fall about the stresses on kids, you know, kind of spilling over from the pandemic on forward and the focus on M T S S and social emotional learning and all of that means that there may be not just opportunities, but genuine needs for greater student support because if the overall mission here is to graduate well-meaning productive humans at a high academic level, I think we're more, more and more becoming aware commonly that if you don't have your overall well-being pillar taken care of, that it, it doesn't matter what's done in the classroom and your curriculum maps don't mean as much, so.
That's right. We need to have students being able to be available, learning.
Fully available.
Well said.
So my, oh, Richard, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment in the overall, I think pillar two, one, the acronym, design in pillar two. I was like, wow, that's pretty amazing. But I think the takeaway for us and for, for the public is that the acronyms all mean something. They mean a structure, they mean a, a plan and thoughtful effort put forth by this, by, by the district. And in every one of those structured and every one of those acronyms, it feels like there's a team of people and, and people doing the work. And that's our teachers and our department heads and our school leaders. So I, I think what this shows is the, the, the intended structure, organized with extreme thought structure that's going to go into this work. And you read the words in about, you know, fifteen or sixteen pages, but there's a whole bunch behind it. I mean, each one of those teams and all those, all those organized structures are amazing, so.
And we just say, at the center of every one of those structures are students.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So it's just, it's the hard work that has to go into this in, in an organized fashion that, that should be the takeaway. And I hope the public senses that as well.
Thank you. I want to just piggyback on that a little bit. I, I, um, overall, this feels really in line with where we are. It very well coordinated, a lot, as you are, you know, as you've called out, a lot of overlap for efficiency, but very much grounded in where it feels like our school community is and needs to be and needs to go. And very well thought out. So I'm, um, I guess maybe I geeked out a little bit too on this when you start talking about some of these things. And I love a good acronym, so I would have liked to dictionary, maybe our dictionary of acronyms. But this is exciting to me. I, I, you know, I think that, thank you, thank to the, to the, to the people that are here tonight. Certainly thank that long list of people that were presented at the beginning of the presentation because clearly this is a lot of work and it's taken a lot of work to get here. It's going to take a lot of work to continue to move forward with this, but it's really exciting. It's really, real, and it's grounded and it's not, it doesn't seem unrealistic. It seems really tangible, really things that we can deliver as a community with, you know, your leadership and everyone's participation. And I think that's what we need. I mean, I think it's not, it, it's not unattainable. It's, it clearly, because this will tag in my second comment, which is, there are already a lot of things on this list that are in progress or have been completed. Right? So we're doing this work and, and the idea of like, as you called out at the very beginning, Dr. Berdus, there's a one-year plan, it's a five-year plan, but there's a one-year action plan, four-year, sorry, yeah, because we lost you. Sorry. Thank you for checking. That's right. But it's, it's tangible and real, so thank you. I got so excited about that, I lost.
I love that you're so excited.
The ability to do math, right? So, uh, so thank you for that. On that same note, when are we going to get, how, how are we going to do updates on this? Because like I said, there are already some things on here where, as we called out with the, and I forgot which one it was, goes in place tomorrow or today or whatever it was, things are already done or things are already, we've already made motion. We haven't made, that's not noted on this presentation, but what are we doing to, to, to monitor our progress? To say, are we, you know, very simply green, yellow or red, whatever the right way to do it? What are we going to do to monitor the progress?
So at the end of the school year, we would come forward in June at one of our meetings and then that last column to be able to give the update of where we are and what has been accomplished.
Right.
So that would be, and annually, here's our new, we would come forward with a new action plan each year and then monitor that during the year. We can, well, there are going to be things that tie in through school committee agenda items throughout the year, but as far as the official update, like we did in the former strategic plan, we've typically done that at the second meeting in June.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is there opportunity, again, I'm, as you, you know, I'm kind of into this, but is there opportunity instead of waiting for the end of the year to provide updates for things that are happening on this without adding overhead? And that's the last thing I want to do, but again, I think it's important if we wait, June is seven months? How they do, yeah, close to seven months, right?
So we could.
Thank you. I would love to just like monitor this a little bit because if it's one-year plans and we're only going to update twice a year, it feels a little bit like I'm out of touch with what's going on.
I, I, two things come to mind. One, doing a mid-year check-in. If we did that in January or February, just kind of mid-year, where we are with that, we could do that. And then at the same time, what we try to do, and we can try to do it even better, is continually connect back to things that we're reporting on, where it falls within our plan for success. So we're constantly coming back and noting that.
So if you can hit me over the head with that, that would be really useful for me because I think, like I said, I'm excited about this and I love, again, how tangible it all is. So I'll, the rest of you may not need to be hit like, over my head like I do.
I was going to say, can we move out of the way? We're turning on.
So I appreciate that, thank you. I do notice on the agenda that this is one of the agenda items that action is required from the school committee. What is the action that you're asking us for this evening?
Asking you for to approve the plan for success.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments since I took all of the time?
My only other comment is thank you for waiting to do this so thoroughly and so well. I remember one or both of you expressed last year that despite all the changes that were going on, you had a lot of members of your committee who were like, no, I think we can do it. And I was like, please stop. Mostly because, you know, I'm glad you're focused where it was where it was last year and the proof is in here and that how thorough and well-connected this document is. So I'm really glad you were able to give yourself permission to wait and, and put, put out something thorough, intertwined and thoroughly actionable. So thanks.
Just like to reiterate all of the people that are here, all of the work that they've done on this and those that were listed at the beginning because it does take varied perspectives to be able to pull it together. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here this evening for that as well, too.
Are you guys excited about this?
I wear party hats.
Okay. That's right, yes, please.
I move to accept the plan for success and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, action items as presented. Is that wording okay?
A second.
Okay, so I just have one thing on this, I'm sorry, before we do that. So this is where I did my math. So on our agenda, we have the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five. The plan that I have in front of me does say twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Do we need to make an adjustment there? Is everybody good with that?
It should, it's, well, you have F Y for fiscal year. So that's the, that's, it's the same, it's saying the same thing. One is spelling it out for the school year and one is saying fiscal year.
Okay. I will accept that explanation, thank you. Okay, so sorry to interrupt the, the motion. So we have a, we have a motion. Is there a second, please?
She's seconded.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I missed it, sorry, Sarah. I get so excited, clearly. You can tell.
Evident.
So thank you, all in favor? Five zero zero, thank you very much. Dr. Melo, I think you knew I was going to be excited about this, so that's why you're like, so thank you guys very much. Thank you guys very much, appreciate it. Okay, moving on, uh, not too far off schedule, the preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-three. Dr. Berdus and Mr. Yukenow.
All right, so this is our, our first discussion of the budget and we will have more meetings in January.
Yes.
The budget this year, I, there's a lot that goes into the budget and I would just like to make note, it's much more difficult when you throw in all of the different grants that we've had this year. So just a lot of extra work on Bill's part. I just, I, I need to state that publicly, just teasing it out and being able to communicate it in a way that makes sense. We hope that we're going to be able to do that this evening and then obviously more questions when we get into the budget subcommittee to, you know, questions that you have because it is, it's different this year because of all of those other variables that come into play. So as far as the timeline, this is going to be familiar to you. We've already had our joint town summit, you know, back in October. And this is serving as the first public presentation of the F Y twenty-three budget. We will then need to schedule our subcommittee, for those of you on the subcommittee. And then we're waiting on the dates, obviously, and who our liaisons will be from AdCom, then scheduling our two school committee meetings that we have in January and then following those up with the vote and then town meeting in May on the ninth. So it's talking about grounding the budget. That's, what, what is the budget really trying to do? So that's the, the message here. And it is continuing to do the good things that we do for kids and the educational services that we provide for students at a high level. And so that's what this budget does. It's proposed to meet the needs of any shifting populations that we have when it comes to service delivery for students, looking at our programs, when we look at our students that have been out of district. You've heard a lot from building programs back in the district, what that does as far as adjusting staffing by having programs more in-house and meeting the needs of students, by having them stay in our neighborhood schools and our schools. At the same time, it's consistent with our financial approach that we've had over the years in developing this budget. It's, it's year to year. It also will outline the priorities that you've seen this evening in the plan for success, whether it's grant-funded or whether it's through the L E A and how that plays out and meeting those four pillars that we've just spent a lot of time talking about. It's going to maintain reasonable class sizes, preserving our current programs and services to students. It takes steps towards moving us towards our initiatives, those that you've seen and heard this evening. At the same time, addressing special education costs, increase costs with new technology tools and solutions and then some increased facility costs that we'll get into as well. But importantly, the budget is one that's going to be able to enable the district to meet the needs of our students across all aspects of public education. In addition of thinking about our school and program areas and keeping that same high level of programs for students, we have to, as a reminder, assume right off the top, a hundred and twenty-five thousand in retirements. That's something that was decided many years ago with the idea that we will have retirements and we will assume some cost savings from there. It doesn't always happen, but we have to take that a hundred and twenty-five thousand right off the top. And then the grant and revolving offset accounts for salaries and any expenses. And then if we have any known reductions in grants, particularly where you're going to hear about two-year grants or three-year grants and then where we are in that, that first year of the two or three. So as we move forward in the increase, I'll turn it over to Bill.
So as you remember, the Board of Selectmen basically put out an edict of a two and a half percent increase for all-town boards to be able to sustain based on the town's revenue forecast over the next couple of years. So for us, a two and a half percent increase is nine hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred. We're obviously in negotiations with six unions, so we quite honestly felt that we had no choice but to go right up to the two and a half percent and ask to use all of it. So that's what this budget has in it. As far as the major components of changes, a lot of times, and we've done this for the last two or three budget cycles, once the budget is actually completed and obviously it's done early, so it's, it's done now into January, we're looking at next year's requirements, next year's needs as far as teaching and curriculum-based. And a lot of times we'll look at a, a situation and come up with a, a way of creatively repurposing our staff. Sometimes it means we'll, we'll change one position to another position, trading it out. Sometimes it means we're creating a new program and we need to basically reutilize people or hire new people, you know, to fill that gap while we eliminate the other side of it. But what, the end result is to do what's best for students and to have the programs that basically service those students in that way. So at the end of F Y twenty-two, basically, or in the F Y twenty-two budget, which is now, we made a a conscious decision basically to reduce ed assistance, some because they were retiring and we didn't feel that we needed them to be replaced based on the staff or the children that we had in different programs. Some, you know, some had aged out, some had left the district. We made a conscious decision on the special ed side to basically reduce out some ed assistance and put in certified teachers to cover those same requirements, but, you know, what we hope to be on a higher level within specialized programs that we were creating. And again, the whole, the whole thing that Foxborough has done well over the years is to create these specialized programs that help to keep our students in the district. If you don't have them, that's when the, the students end up leaving the district to collaboratives or private schools. And it's not, quite honestly, the best thing in all purposes for the kids. Sometimes it's the only option you have because we can't do it internally. But being able to keep them within their own neighborhoods, we feel is also a key component. So you see that basically there was a reduction in nine and a half ed assistance between need and model change and an addition of two teachers in the FY '22 budget after the budget was completed. For FY '23, we have a number of little changes and some others that will be a little bit more involved as we go through here. So as you know, we've, we've expanded the borough school from about a 40,000 square foot to a 60,000 square foot building. We've done a lot of stuff to make it much easier to maintain, but it's still 60,000 square feet. And with the new gym, the size it is, and we've already got people lined up to want to use the gym, you know, the, the amount of hallway space now, it just is taking more staff to do it. So we actually had to make a decision this year to add a .5 custodian to basically be able to maintain that building. The building is about the same size as the IGO, which has three full-time custodians. This will have two and a half. So that's where the efficiency of the way we built the building can save us a little, but it still took a little bit more. The art change actually is really only a .1 for this budget, but there was a mistake in last year's budget of .2. So it looks like a .3 when we, when we have to match it out. So what we're doing is reducing basically a .1 art and adding a .1 music on the elementary level to basically service the needs of the schedule across the, the three schools. And the principals worked hard on that to make that something that we believe will work. The BCBA, we previously contracted outside of the district. We were paying very good money for it, but weren't getting a lot of time because obviously the cost of paying a private contractor to come in and do the work. By doing it internally with our own staff member, we're slightly more money, but we have a full-time person. So we have access to them full-time to service the needs of the students. The special education teacher, language-based program, that program was put in place this year for fifth and sixth grade, last year, for fifth and sixth grade. Now we have kids that will be elevating up to fifth, sixth, seventh grade and then up to eighth grade. So in order to do that, you, we need an extra teacher to basically able to cover the fifth and sixth and then the seventh and eighth. So it was part of a multi-year program, but that, again, is putting a program in that school that basically keeps access to students of something that, you know, we can do internally. We are looking at a similar thing as we did last year where we are looking at the reduction of four educational assistants and replacing that with two more special education teachers, same models what we've used on the inclusion model with the education, with the teachers being able to provide a higher level of service. This is being funded by those two, you know, by the, the reduction in educational assistance. Also, the 252 grant, which is only going to be for a couple of years, is funding a portion of that, so that it's technically a cost neutral. The OT, basically, we have a CODA position right now. What we believe is that an occupational therapist position would be a better service need for the, you know, special ed department. So again, it's a switch from one to the other in order to do that. And again, we're getting some grant funding to cover that cost. As Dr. Berdus, I believe Dr. Mello said earlier, .5 social worker, S R 3 grant. So one of the very confusing things on the budget processes, as Dr. Berdus said, was we had last year, if you remember, actually last year and a half, we had money that came in from the state, from the town side to cover a lot of expenses we had for PPE and the computers and things like that. Then we had the S R 1 and S R 2 grants and we had health grants and we had a couple of other things. And so what happened was outside of your budget for the first time, because it's not a very normal process when the state's just giving you money after the fact and you're in the process of already doing it, those expenses were carved off and put right against those American Rescue Plan grants. So when you look at the budget that you have in your package now, what you see as far as what we actually spent in FY '21, that's your actual budget numbers. It's not garbled up with all the S R grants and stuff like that, which, again, I've given you before, but I'll be happy to give you again the breakdown of exactly how much we spent. And I think if you remember, it was about $2 million, you know, between the computers and the PPE and the added nursing and all of that stuff that we had to do that, that took care of that. Well, this is the second level of that now. We got the S R 3 grants, the 252 grant and this health grant. Because they're going to impact us, they're already impacting us this year and they're not in your budget, but we're, we're doing some of that same work with it. I am showing it to you in the budget so you can see where those are going to flow for the next year. The year after, obviously, they go away and the decisions will have to be made. But a lot of it, the way we looked at it, a lot of these positions that the S R grants are covering, their intention is to support you now during the, the hard times of what COVID is and what it's created, the social, emotional issues, the nursing requirements, stuff like that. We truly all hope that a year out from now, we're not in the same situation. Things start to come back into place and then you'll make the decisions as to which things you do need and which things you don't need once those S R grants go away. But again, I think as a community, we've decided that it's best to put all the supports we can put in and not just do, I don't recall it, fluff items, but not just do things that we could spend the money on. We're doing it on things that directly are student-related. So you got the first one there is the social worker under the S R grant. You've got the A L teacher under the S R grant. You have an interventionist teacher under the S R grant. The nurse, another nurse, .5, which we already had a nurse under the S R 1 grant for .5. So right now, we've gone from having 5.8 nurses up to 6.8, I believe it is. Which has given us the ability, because you can imagine the amount, as, as Dr. Berdus said before, the amount of, you know, contact tracing, just the paperwork that's being generated now, especially in the two bigger schools, is incredible. And you still have the children who have the direct day-to-day needs, you know, whether it's diabetes or whatever it is that's impacting them that you have to be able to service. So it has given us a breather to be able to maintain that stuff, but again, fortunately, right now it's funded outside of the town's taxpaying budget.
When you think of things like vision and eye screening, you know, hearing, I mean, hearing and vision screening and all of the things that they do in a typical year, still needing to do all of that.
On top of test and stay.
And we've got test and stay taking place every single day and that's taking on time.
From the IT point of view, you know, we've exploded from having labs with individual computers and a few in classrooms to having every student have computers as well as having some of those classroom computers and stuff. So quite honestly, between what we're doing and what happened on the town side, being able to use an S R grant to give us an additional desktop support, you know, person is really needed and so that helps fill the need to make sure we keep moving forward here. The whole social worker area, quite honestly, is a, is a big need right now, has already been discussed. So out of the grants that we've got here between the health grant and the S R grant, we're basically bringing in 1.5 additional social workers. And again, you know, a year from now, you'll have to make a decision, but you'll also have some track record of how it worked, what it did for us and at basically using a grant versus taxpayer, direct taxpayers' dollars, obviously, all taxpayers' money. And then the last one is the educational liaison. So even with all these changes, basically, we're down 1.2 staff members, FTEs. If we carve out the ones that are grants, we'd be adding back six. We would be back, we would be down 7.2 FTEs for the FY '23 budget, based on the revised program design and the, you know, curriculum-based programs.
If, looking at that 7.2, what, how much of that is the intentional thoughtful, meaning planned for swap between educational assistance to special education?
That's what the whole, that's what the 7.2 is.
So it's right there.
It's the revision of programs, the revision of use, in need of people, basically, was what that was, what generated that. So we would have done that, had we had a normal year, had we had no grants at all, we believe that this would have been the model we would have adopted anyway. So we would have been down 7.2 FTEs.
Yes. Okay. There you go.
The budget itself, as far as building level, you know, expenses have been pretty much level funded, although they, we have looked at a few areas, which you'll see as we go through here, that needed to be adjusted. Special ed, on a bright side, has actually been, is coming down a little because I think the special ed program has done a great job relative to being able to bring stump students back to, you know, Foxborough High School as well as Foxborough Middle School. So that's going in a different direction than it's been going for the last couple of years, which is nice to see. And then our utility costs, you know, basically, one of the things that's kind of ironic with this, with the whole issue around COVID was that everything was supposed to be efficient. When we built buildings, how we ran buildings, how tight buildings were so that heat wasn't lost, so that air conditioning wasn't lost, so that's all out the window, literally. So what we've had to do, obviously, by opening up and having higher levels of ventilation, fresh air coming in, it requires us to heat more air because you can't bring in 32-degree air into a classroom and expect them to be comfortable if you haven't brought that up to 70 degrees as it's coming through. When it was closed and you were only bringing in 5%, 10% of fresh air, you know, basically you were heating much less. So our, as you'll see in the, in the thing, our gas bills have significantly raised, probably will be this way for a few years minimum, but we have also done everything we can with locking in, you know, gas and electric rates for the next three years. We've, I've worked with Bill Keegan and George to sign new contracts to take the town back for the next three years in locked rates. So we know that we've gotten good rates that can't really fly away on us, but we do know we're going to spend more money in the short run to do this. And it may just be the way the future is. People may just be more comfortable with the fact that, you know, we've effectively gone to a more fresh air-based environment, if you will. So, you know, again, I think from the major points, you're, you're looking at service-based staffing changes, level-funded expenses in the budget, special ed out-of-district enrollments, obviously changed not only the tuitions, but they changed transportation, positive or negative. In this case, we happen to be dropping, which is nice. District-wide utility expenses. And then we have the six contracts that are pending right now that we are, we've received letters. Obviously, we're in negotiations already with the teachers' union, but we've received letters for the bus drivers' union. Extended Day has given us their letter just today, actually.
And then secretaries.
And the secretaries have. So we'll be in the process with all of them. So what you see in the budget as far as individual lines for salaries, basically take every one of our employees that are in the budget today, it rolls them down if they are going to get a step next year, it takes account for that step. If we know of a lane change that they're qualifying for, it moves them over on a lane, but it has no individual cola rate. We have a lump sum number and amounts built into the budget to hopefully be able to cover the requirement for the negotiated rates as we go through here. Obviously, when you've got a 2.5% increase, there is limitations in what you can do on negotiations. So it's not an open checkbook for us as a school district and we've always lived within the town's means to maintain this. So major components, as we said, obviously you have your staffing changes, which nets out to 1.2 down. The hot, the, the single largest increases in, because most items are level-funded year over year, is that the tuitions on out-of-district at this point, and hopefully they'll improve and get, and drop even more, are down 78, almost 79,000. The out-of-district transportation is down 64,000. Special ed instruction supplies is actually up 41,000. But that is the, the 252 grant, which specifically can't be used to supplant what we are currently doing. It is specifically for advancement of the needs for students. So we've added it as a line. It will go away in the future, but it's, it can't be used to cover other expenses we normally would have, which is different than a lot of our grants. A lot of our grants that are year over year over year basically covers our normal operating costs. That's the way we've built the budgets through. But these grants, because they're all American Rescue Plan grants, basically it's to do something above and beyond what your budget was intended to do. Technology software licenses, Aaron has been warning about this for years and quite honestly, it hit us like a brick this year. We've gone from about $150,000 in annual licensing fees and this is, this is really broken into three different areas. I probably will mess them up, but it's, it's basically the software for the operational side of it, the networking side of it. It's the curriculum-based software packages and it, the third one is.
Platforms.
Yes, a plat, yeah, I'm sorry.
The clever.
Yeah, right. So what happened with all of the laptops, we were forced into obviously getting a lot of different software that we never had before, which is all license-based, individual by each one. And now we had one for every student. So it really kind of rocked this, this thing. And I will say, I am very comfortable that we have somebody in Aaron that basically negotiates the best rate because not all these things are just you pay what they ask for. You can really negotiate based on your size and what you're doing. He's done a phenomenal job on that, but it still is, if you, I have literally lists for last year and this year that we've paid already. Last year equaled $363,000. So it's, it's pretty incredible when you look at the, the cost of these things. But again, we're looking at a district with 2,600 students, 2,600 laptops out there, another probably 600 to 700 desktops that are sprinkled around the buildings. We've taken a lot of those out of service that, that we didn't need in labs before. So we're, we're, you know, probably at this point, I would say in total, around 3,500 to 3,700 in computers that we're licensing for. Now, the beauty of some of our licenses is that it allows people, students, to actually put some of the software on their own computers as well. You can get multiple licenses that way through ours, but it doesn't cost them anything additional. But it doesn't cost us anything additional either, it's just the benefit of doing it.
I will say too, on the curriculum review side, when we have our cycle between reviews, we're looking to negotiate with, a lot of our textbooks are now digital and we look to negotiate those five-year rates to take us from curriculum review to curriculum review and it is prorated. That has been very helpful too, to be able to do that.
Yeah. The, we, we have seen over the last couple of years on our bus repairs that they just are elevating. This is not a big number overall, but it is something that just no longer could be maintained. And really, this is only going from 70 to 85,000. So it's not like it's a major change, but it is a change that we have to account for. Our utility costs, as I said, when you look at them in total, this is a little misleading because there was an error in last year's budget. They, it's really FY '21 to FY '23 is only about a $10,000 increase. But last year, when we tried to reorganize and put them into the different categories that they really felt, you know, were more under, there's like four or five electrical accounts, there's a couple of gas accounts and stuff like that, and we did the shrinkage on a couple of them. We forgot to put the added point into the other one where we were trying to put it. So fortunately, we, you know, we had some of the savings we have because of what's going on and we'll, we'll make it through that. But this is going forward, this is a cost that we, we're probably not going to be able to absorb anyway. Custodial supplies, 38,000 of this, 88,000 is actually, again, being funded through grants. But what we have also feel that we're probably going to be more into this as a norm is that, you know, the ability, and I know teachers have said this to us as well as other staff, that having, you know, the ability to have wipes in their classrooms and be able to do different things. different things on a regular basis, you know, is something that they would like to see stay, no matter, you know, whether COVID is here or not, because it just, for them, gives them a little bit more peace of mind in the thing. So, we will have some increased costs that way. But, you know, as I said, some of this is just because we're getting that grant money on the 38,000, and we will spend it on product like the masks and any of the other PPE stuff that we need.
Uh huh.
And then all of the other expenses in total only equal a $38,000 difference. So, you have 369,000 in increases in expense lines. We always show you the comparison year-over-year as to far as what the budget's done percentage-wise, where it's gone. As you can see, we've, we've had better years as far as what's been available to the town. And, you know, the 2.5% is one of the lowest, actually, is the lowest percentage we've ever been able, we've garnered from the town itself. But I think if anybody looks back at, you know, what the revenue loss to the town has been for the last year or so, year or two, and what the track record looks like going forward, we have really depleted a lot of resources to make it to where we are today. So, you know, again, it is what it is. I think, I think all departments have been put into the same boat as far as what they've been asked to do. From an enrollment point of view, we're still trending down a little bit here, as you can see, the, most of it's on the middle school level. As you also remember, we've made adjustments over the last three budget cycles, reducing staffing, where they, we no longer needed it there. And that, basically, when we didn't need, you know, they added eighth grade, when we didn't need, they added seventh grade, we didn't need, they added sixth grade, they added fifth grade, actually, in reverse order, you know, teachers were, positions were eliminated. In most cases, it was due to retirements, we really didn't have to rift anybody in that process, so it was more that we took advantage of what was available to us.
Retriction.
To go through the process itself. So, we're very thoughtful in looking at our enrollments and looking at our staffing and our needs. And to this point, most of it has been on the middle school level.
And the other piece too here, when you look at our out-of-district placements and a lot of the work with Corey and others, when you see those numbers go down, and then you see on the other side of like our language-based program and needing now, where we've got the fifth and sixth grade to go up to seventh and eighth, that's where that offset comes.
Right.
The revolving counts, so last year is kind of, if you look at that, these are the revolving accounts that were in the budget process that you saw that is how it made up our total budget. These are kind of the normals on the FY22. So, we normally ran around $2 million in total. The circuit breaker at about 800,000. Revolving accounts, you know, that we take money from like Extended Day and tuition accounts and stuff like that. They help to fund some of our utility costs, and then the grants themselves. And those are, you know, your, your 142, your Title I, your Title...
2A.
2A. We get those year after year, there's special programs that we run internally, the money is directed towards those, and there's specific needs. In this particular year, you're seeing a bump of $486,000. Those are all going to be gone after FY23. So, you know, again, I'm trying to kind of caution you on that, that the, that grant line is not going to be retained unless, you know, you know, they decide that there's some needs that we don't know about this time. So, I think that's slowly going to dwindle. I think what will probably happen, because in some cases, what they will probably let us do, if we don't spend all of the grant money in a given year, they've allowed us to extend some of it out. We may get an additional year on some of these, because again, they gave some of the stuff to us just now.
Yeah.
And we're supposed to implement it this year. It's kind of hard halfway through the year to hire the people that you need and get the stuff going. So, we see that, that even what we budgeted for next year is a solid year, but we may have half of the year this, this year's money that still flows forward. And if they give it to us, then obviously, we can survive a little bit longer on that. From an overall point of view, the pie really hasn't changed much. I think the, it was 55.28, I believe, last year for the instructional side of things. Obviously, technology was probably the only one that took a major leap, and that's all in that software line. So, I, you know, I think overall, you know, we do still prove that most of our money is going into curriculum for regular ed and special ed. You're looking at basically 83, 84% of the money goes right into the classrooms, although I would argue that technology is part of the classrooms as well, so probably closer to 91%.
Didn't mean to go out of it, I don't know if I did that or not, but the, the last slide there was just talking about next steps, and that you would be familiar with as far as continuing to be reviewed between now and January, having continued budget discussions with the subcommittee, our meetings in January as the school committee, and then presenting to EdCom after the new year as well.
The only, the, the major important one there is, you'll have two more meetings in public session. You do have to vote your budget by January 25th.
And you, when do you want to talk, would, when, by when should the subcommittee meet?
We're, we're ready anytime now. Now that we've got this done, we have most of our stuff scheduled on.
Yeah, okay.
Other stuff, Bill, sit down and go through it with you. Obviously, this is a draft, there can be changes between now and the next two school committee meetings if there's things that you look at and see that you wish to have discussions further on. So, it's our proposal at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any preliminary questions or feedback?
I do apologize, by the way, that you didn't get this earlier. We've had kind of a interesting week or so, trying to get all this stuff kind of wrapped up and tied out, and as Dr. Burroughs said, the grants didn't help us overall. But if you look at the actual budget document itself, again, same layout as always, it's building-based, so it goes through each one of the schools, then it's, on top of that, it's program-based, whether it's special ed, arts, music, athletics, facilities, district-wide administration. As I said, you'll see very little differences. Anything that was a staffing change will be highlighted for you, so you'll see that those, where those changes are throughout the budget. And I typically try to put next to it, if like, what you'll see is there's a .1, .1, .1, .1, .1 for nursing in one, in each of the buildings. Effectively, it's, that's the .5 of the grants, and it says to the side, the grants type thing. So, I try to follow those things out for you so you can see them, and that's it. So, there's quite a bit of detail there for you to chew on for a while.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As always, I really appreciate of all the work that goes into this. I know, you know, I understand the added challenges that you're discussing this year, but I really appreciate, and I think we as a committee really appreciate the care with which you look at, you know, how we move resources around, what are the, what is the right thing to do for the, for the, for the school community and for the town in general. So, looking forward to the continued discussions around the budget, so thank you. Next on the agenda, coming to, close to the end, is a donation from the Foxborough Soccer Club.
So, that is one that you've seen before when we have firstly assistant coaches, that is supported by the boosters, which, this is for soccer from the soccer club, as you said, for $2,000.
Thank you. May we have a motion to accept the donation?
I move to accept the generous donation from the Foxborough Soccer Boosters of $2,000 with gratitude.
Thank you very much.
A second.
Thank you, Sarah.
My second.
So, all in favor of the donation? 500, thank you very much to the Foxborough Soccer Club. Thank you to Mario Pacini for his coaching with the, with the soccer team. Final agenda item is other matters. Mr. Yukna.
Other than the borough stuff coming up, actually, I will say on the borough project itself, while we still have a fairly lengthy punch list, it's really looking quite good out there. The final major components that you can probably notice are the playgrounds, which finally equipment showed up four months late, but it's in the process of going in right now. We're just hoping that the weather holds as to what we've seen for the next couple of days, so that they can get as much of the rubber surface down as possible, so that we can start to enjoy using those playgrounds. I have a feeling that the two swing set components may not be completed, but at least if we can get everything else done, we'll be in good shape there. The exterior actually looks very good, the landscaping has been, you know, they've done a very good, nice job on that. There are some sections that we just seeded, so obviously, we won't have grass in that one area, which is in the front of the building until the spring, but it will freeze pretty soon and be hard, so that, that shouldn't be an issue. I think the, you heard from one of our residents a while ago, the, there are three sites on the, on the grounds that are dedicated to different individuals, all three have been restored and are back into the condition, if not better than what they were originally. So, we were pleased to be able to get that, that completed. And on the inside, the, it's mostly cosmetic stuff. In the gym, there are sound panels, colored sound panels that need to go up on the walls, they've been delayed but are in process, they're just finishing the curtains on the stage area, so that should be done this week, hopefully. It's a nice gym, it really came out very nice. I think the way we've got it done, it will get a lot of use, whether it's youth basketball or, I know our kids at the school love it, it's given them a nice big place to be able to actually have their, not only their gym classes, but, you know, within climate weather, you can, you can hold quite a few kids in there as far as grade level, so that, that's worked out well. The cafeteria has worked out phenomenally well, and, and, you know, again, some minor components in there that still need to be completed, but you can't really notice it unless you're involved with it daily. So, I think overall, it's really, I think the, the teachers are enjoying it, the students seem to be enjoying it, and the, you know, the issues that we have to resolve, we will just continue to resolve as time goes on.
Thank you. Grace, any updates for us?
I don't, I don't think so, not really.
Okay, well, thank you again for joining us this evening. So, thank you. Dr. Melo.
I just think since our last meeting, we've had very successful parent-teacher conferences, and having the virtual option was very well-received by many parents. We saw high levels of participation, so I just think it's a silver lining, we've talked about it before, of something that we learned from the pandemic that we've brought forward to make accessibility better for more people, so just wanted to, and the book fair is going on at the middle school. I know Mrs. Anis is very excited about that.
As always, Dr. Melo, Dr. Burroughs, excuse me.
I had the pleasure of attending last Thursday night's holiday concert at the high school. I know some of you were there as well, just the chorus and the band and the orchestra and all of those that were there. It was just, it was so nice to see all of them together, they just did an amazing job, so it felt normal, you know, as, as far as getting back to that. And then also, I would just like to say, is the holidays are coming up and then we're leaving, is for an extended break, to continue to be mindful of all of the mitigation strategies that we are employing in schools to keep our students in school and for our families, and then at the same time, we also recognize that it's a difficult time of year, particularly with loss that families have felt over the last year. So, our thoughts are with our families for, for a healthy and a safe break, but again, recognizing too, that it's, it's not easy understanding that we've all been through a lot in this past year.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson.
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Raven?
No, I'm good, thank you very much.
Ms. Ladani?
I actually do have a piece of housekeeping. Brent just made a note, and I just wanted to let you know, I believe when I signed on for the warrant summary analysis and to be the agent to sign the warrants, we had talked about a six-month review, and I think we're right around that six months. I just wanted to let you know, things are going great. I go in typically on Fridays, sign the warrants, and you see the review analysis. Just wanted to check with everyone and make sure that they were satisfied with the way things are going. Also, I, I think I would need someone in January to step in for me, the second week I'll be away on vacation, so, you know, like I said, just, just a housekeeping thing to make the board aware of and see if anyone had any comments or feedback or anything, or anybody really wanted to come in and sign warrants every week. It's totally fine, I won't be offended.
Right.
But I'm happy to keep, you know, keep things the way.
So, that was going to be my question, because we've had six, six months, and I, if it's, if it's working for you, I do look at this every week, I appreciate the summary that's put together, I appreciate the time that you take every week to go in and do it. I am, most weeks I can come in and do it, if it's becoming, you know, too much overhead for you, I'm happy to step in and, and do it for the, you know, for the rest of the year if we need to, but if you're, if, if, you know, you're able to continue to accommodate it, I, I think it works for me really well, so personally, I don't know if anyone else on the committee has any other...
I think it seems to be working out well. I like the fact that we get kind of the overview, so all of us is really looking at it.
Yeah.
As kind of a double check, which is, I think, nice overall. I, I'm kind of just still in shock that it's been six months, but that's just a whole other issue.
I believe it's been, I should believe it's been seven.
It's only been six months or it's already been six months?
No, then it's already been six months. I'm still shocked it's been seven, so...
Yeah, it is seven, I think it was November.
I don't think anyone, you know, I think it's one of those things that just was happening, and I, I really wouldn't have mentioned it if Brent didn't just say, "Oh, thanks." And I thought, wait, weren't we supposed to review this? So, I'm glad, actually, I'm glad that we just touched down and thank you for your confidence in me, and if anyone has any questions on anything, just let me know, because I do ask a lot of questions.
And as far as that week in January, I am...
Perfect, I'll let you know.
So, just let me know what that week is, and I'm happy to, to just go in that, we can do it, so.
Great.
Mr. Ruder.
Well, following from that also, thank you, Bill, to you and your staff for putting together the reports, because it was a, I know we had a lot of, I thought, useful debate about whether the, you know, what the pros and cons were of the procedure, and having those reports really made it possible, so thank you. I have nothing else to add, except hopping off what Amy said, get your at-home COVID tests. We want to stay in school when you have a wonderful holiday with your families and, and be responsible, because we want schools to stay open.
Thank you. And on that, no, so I have nothing else myself either, so thank you all very much. Thank you to everyone who attended this evening and joined us, and thank you for everyone who watched at home, and have a wonderful holiday, and we will see you back here, January 11.
2022.
Right? Do I have the right date? Because I screwed up the date last time.
Motion to adjourn.
Did I get the wrong date?
Are you talking about the date of Bill coming back for school?
No, the actual school committee, school committee meeting.
School committee, meeting.
January 11.
January 11, okay, phew, I got it right.
You need to be back in school before January 11.
Yes, we do.
Yes, yes, so the next school committee is January 11. May we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you all very much.